What's going on everybody? We're here, we're live. I want to thank you all for joining me today. If you can hear me clearly, please just put a one in a live chat right now and let me know that you can hear me and then we could get going with today's show. It's gonna be a quick one, shooting from the hip. I didn't prepare too, too much, but I just wanted to speak on this real quick. While it's relatively fresh online because it's really interesting what's going on in New York with the New York City Council at the moment. Okay. So I see the ones coming in right now. So let me flip over real quick on my end to the actual tweet that you're looking at. And before I even get too deep into it, New York City is done, alright? For black Americans, New York City is finished. All these stories that I've done on this channel so far, I've done so many stories concerning just the anti-black racism that goes on across this country, right? And two things kind of dawned on me right before the livestream. The first thing that dawned on me was the fact that almost every time I'm reporting on any type of anti-black racism, any type of foolishness, right, that's going on within politics. Outside of the fact that it's always Democrats doing it, right? It's always Democratic-run cities and states. It's always New York, Chicago, Los Angeles, Washington DC. Has anybody else picked up on that? It's always these areas where the foolishness is happening. But New York specifically, you see this very targeted attack on black Americans in New York that you really don't see to the, to the same degree, right? I should say, not that you don't see, but that you don't see to the same degree in all these other cities. And it's, it's really mind-blowing to me from, uh, you see right now where all the illegal immigrants are coming into New York City. They're being bussed in, the black homeless population are being kicked out of shelters so that they can make room for the immigrants that are coming in. We saw and I reported on, uh, what was about a year ago now, or maybe a little, not, not a little over a year ago, but a year ago now, where you had city council, right? They passed the bill to allow undocumented, uh, New Yorkers, right? Undocumented immigrants, the right to vote. Now fortunately, that was struck down by, I believe it was the New York Supreme Court, but they passed it regardless. And in the video that I always play, uh, concerning that video where they passed a law for, um, non-citizens to have the right to vote, there's that clip, famous clip as far as I'm concerned of the black city councilwoman saying, "We don't know how this is gonna affect black New Yorkers yet, but nobody cares how it's gonna affect black New Yorkers," right? So you, you see this stuff happening over and over, even we can go back to the very beginning of the, what I call the illness in 2020, right? I don't like to say the actual word, uh, still to this day, but remember when the illness first occurred in 2020? And we saw that in New York, black folks walking outside without a mask, outside, mind you, outside. Black people who are outside without a mask were being body slammed to the ground, beat up and arrested in New York City. While a few blocks over in Central Park, white New Yorkers who were going into Central Park without a mask on, outside, were being handed masks by NYPD. They weren't being body slammed to the ground and arrested the way that you were. So I could, I could go on and on about New York, but it's, it's, it's really sad to see that black folks in New York are really in a lot of trouble, to say the very least, really, really in a lot of trouble. And now get straight into the main topic so you can see how much trouble that we're actually in in New York. Because right now, uh, something very interesting has come about where you see city council members are falsely claiming black, falsely claiming black Americans for being, uh, anti-Asian, they're falsely claiming black Americans, uh, as being anti-Asian, right? Now, there was a city council meeting and I'm gonna read a couple tweets right here. This is the guy that kind of started, uh, started it all. As far as things getting trending on, things trending on Twitter about this story, right? So this guy's name is Andrew Fine. Let's see who he is really quick. He's a blogger, Andrew Fine VP. He's, okay, I'm not gonna read the address. Okay, he's just some, he's just a writer in New York. And Andrew Fine posted this, right? "A man at today's New York City Council hearing on Keith Powers NYC intro 632 called Asian Americans testimony garbage, called them racist, said they are not New Yorkers, said they follow black people around stores, don't belong in Regal Park because they come from Hong Kong and China." Now, what is he talking about right now? Let me slide down a little bit. Now unfortunately, uh, I have to do what I have to do in order to protect this channel. So given the nature of what this video is becoming online, I'm not gonna play it here. And I'm so sorry, I'm, I'm sure you probably want to hear what that brother is saying, but I, I have to think about the best interest of the channel. I'm not gonna play that, even though he's not saying anything. But in this video, this was a city council meeting on, uh, as you can see on the bottom, it reads Committee on Civil Rights, on Civil and Human Rights. This brother right here that you see who's, uh, very animated on your screen, he was at the city council meeting speaking on anti-black racism. He was speaking on the anti-black racism that he experiences in his neighborhoods by Asian Americans, right? He was talking about how they follow him around in stores. He was talking about all the racist treatment that he gets while being in his own neighborhood by Asians. So this man, this black man is speaking on anti-black racism. But what this turned into is him being anti-Asian for having the audacity to point out anti-black racism. That's what this is. So now when I go back and read this guy's tweets, this guy's tweet again, it makes a little bit more sense. So I'm gonna read it one more time, then we're gonna carry on, right? "A man at today's New York City Council hearing on Keith Powers NYC nit intro 632 called Asian Americans testimony garbage, called them racist, said they are not New Yorkers, said they follow black people around stores, don't belong in Regal Park because they come from Hong Kong and China." What this guy tweeted out is a gross representation of what that audio actually was, right? And what that audio actually is. And yes, you are 100% correct, Mo Facts. They're just making us, uh, anti-everything. Black folks are just, we just anti-everything. They may, they're making us the face of everything that's evil in this country. But then again, I guess what else is new, correct? So now let me carry on with this man's tweet for a little bit, then we're gonna move on to some people in city council. So this guy continues to write, "This testimony went completely unchecked by any council member in the room. Yet CM, CMN Natasha, running the show, said she was triggered when someone referred to a murderer who carved his initials into victims' backs. A monster. Unbelievable." Right? So I want to highlight to you who he's blaming right now. So I just set the scene, right? What's the scene? Black folks showed up to a city council hearing to speak against the anti-black racism that they're experiencing from Asians in their community, right? They speak out and then what happens is this guy is now blaming this woman, who I'll pull up right here, Natasha Williams, who was running the show, quote, "He calls her out for not shutting tho- that brother down," right? She's a city council member who was in the meeting, who was running that city council meeting. And he called her out for not shutting that brother down for expressing his grievances concerning the anti-black racism that he's experiencing by Asians in New York, right? Now we're gonna come back to her in a minute, but let's go back to Andrew Fine and read the one last tweet that he has here. "New York, we have to do better, be objective, be fair, and be fair to, to law-abiding citizens." The tirade is at the 408 mark in the video accessed here. Um, and you know what I'm gonna do for those that want, I'm gonna copy this link right now. Cause if you want, if you want to actually watch the video, well, no, I'm sure you don't want to sit through the entire, uh, city council, uh, meeting. But let me give you the link to this. This is the copied link, okay? So if you want to watch this video for yourself, like I said, I have to look out in the best interest of the channel. I'm, I'm not gonna play that video, even though that brother said nothing wrong, but I have to be careful, okay? And let me just drop this in a live chat for you all. So when you have a moment, you can view this for yourself. And I will also leave the link to that video, um, in the description box below after this livestream is over, okay? So now, let's carry on so we can see what's happening over here in, uh, New York. So he says this, okay? Fine, good, whatever. Now, mind you, he tagged New York, uh, Keith Powers. Keith Powers, right here, is the, let's go to his main page. He's the majority leader in New York City Council, right? The New York City Council, okay? He's the majority leader there. He tagged him. So now, this was Keith Powers' response. Keith Powers, who is the majority leader at New York City City Council, he responded this. "I'll be crystal clear. No one should walk into a New York City Council chambers and say hurt hateful speech." Okay? So he put that on those, he put that on those brothers over there. He said, "No one should walk into New York City Council, Council chambers and say hateful speech." And, uh, before I carry on, as he's somebody, um, sent me a Cash App, I appreciate the support, brother. Thank you very much. It's always, um, uh, appreciated and it's very necessary to help to show, uh, move forward. Anytime, uh, brothers like yourself and sisters show me support on the channel, uh, via Cash App or Super Chat or anything like that, it is always deeply, deeply appreciated. Thank you very much, brother. So now let's carry on. So remember this guy right here, Keith Powers, okay? And the reason that I want you to, I want you to remember him, who's, who's telling you right now that those brothers that were there at that city council meeting were spewing hatred towards Asians. This man is a liar. Keith Powers, right? Majority Leader, New York City Council is a liar. And as a matter of fact, before I prove to you that he's a liar, let me give you the link to his Twitter page as well. Give me just a moment. And I just dropped the link to his Twitter in the live chat and I will do my best to remember to leave the link to his Twitter page in the live comment, in the, this, uh, description box below after the stream is over, right? But let me show you how this anti-black racist Keith Powers is a liar. Somebody who watched this video, right, in its entirety, right? Somebody who watched the videos in its entirety. They wrote this, Jason Curtis, and I see also Black Light Revelations 2, uh, thank you, brother, very much, uh, for supporting the show. Always appreciate it when I, when I, when a good, good brother like Black Light Revelations, uh, shows me love in the super chat. I appreciate that, bro. And, uh, let me just show you a little love and pin that up there for a little bit. So let me read this tweet off to you. "When city council majority leader, leader Keith Powers was asked last night about why he did not intervene in the anti-Asian tirade, he told a constituent that he was not in the room," right? Now let me show you this, okay? This is what he wrote. So this person, Kirsten, um, however you say the last name, uh, Theodz, whatever, it doesn't matter. This person tweeted out, "Wow, Keith Powers didn't know you tolerated anti-Asian rhetoric at hearings for bills you introduced. Check your white privilege," okay? Keith Powers responded, "I was in the room next door for a different hearing at this point, as were most members, Democrat and Republican, by this junction of the hearing. It's not tolerated, but would appreciate your, you checking the facts before deciding to attack people on Twitter." Once again, ladies and gentlemen, this man is a liar because as you can see here, he was sitting right there. He was sitting right across from those brothers when they were expressing their grievances. There they go. You see where the cursor is? Those are the people that you just saw. I didn't play the video, but these are the ones that you just saw who were expressing their grievances concerning anti, uh, black racism. And he claimed that he wasn't there. He was in a different room. But as you can see right here where my cursor is to the right, he's sitting right there. So this man is a liar. He's a liar. He was in the room the entire time. And he did step in to say anything because they weren't doing anything wrong. They were expressing their grievances. They were expressing the anti-black racism that they experienced from the Asian community in New York City. And he didn't find anything wrong with that because they weren't doing anything wrong by expressing that. But once the heat came down, all of a sudden, false heat, that is, by false claiming these people for being anti-Asian, once the heat came down, this man lied and said that he wasn't there. When he's clearly right here, you can still see him on the right-hand side. You can see him clear as day. The man is right there. He's a liar. This man lied and said, "I was in the room next door for a different hearing." But we can clearly see him right here as clear as day. And let me show you now how all the other city council members are pouncing on black folks in New York. Particularly these black people that are here on the screen on the left that spoke on what they spoke on, but you have to understand, it's not just an attack on them. It's an attack on all black New Yorkers when they do this, okay? It's an attack on all of them. Now look at this here. "Councilwoman Vicky Palladino, Councilwoman Vicky Palladino, this is what progressive Democrats bring to the council chamber, open anti-Asian hatred. Totally unacceptable, but at least they're not even trying to hide it anymore. Vote accordingly." These are the people that are making the laws in New York that black, that black Americans in New York are gonna be, uh, subjugated to, right? They're just outright lying on these black folks. Here's another one right here. Sandra Ong, I believe that's how you say her last name. And as you can see here, she is also a New York City Councilwoman of the 20th District, immigrant, activist, attorney, kickboxer, marathoner, booty, okay? And she/her, but she is a New York City Councilwoman, right? Now let's look, let's take a look at what she had to say. "The comments today at today's New York City Council hearing attacking Asian Americans were racist and divisive. Racial attacks like this have no place in our city, much less council, uh, council chambers and should be condemned by all." So now, to call out anti-black racism is hate speech. In the city of New York, you are not allowed to call out anti-black racism, especially if it's against someone who is of the API community. Because if you do, if you have the audacity to say, "Hey, I've been mistreated. This is racist. I'm experiencing anti-black racism from this Asian community here in my neighborhood." You're gonna be charged with anti-Asian hate. You're gonna be charged with hate speech in New York. That is unbelievable to me. And it's actually a very, very scary thing that we see going on right now in New York. If we're being honest, the level of openness that you see happening in New York City, how open they are with their anti-black racism is mind-blowing. It's not like here in LA where you saw they were trying to keep it, uh, behind the scenes. What's that woman's name? Nunez? And it just kind of happened to leak. They're out here on Twitter just lying on black folks, just lying, outright lying. And they're the ones that are gonna make the laws that you're gonna be subject, uh, subjected to in New York. Uh, thank you very much, uh, famously, uh, Blacker for your support. Once again, anytime I receive support on this channel, uh, it makes it so much easier and so much, uh, and it brings my spirits up. It makes it a lot easier, um, to do these live streams and to bring it to you and to go through the process of doing the research to find, um, this type of content to bring to you so we understand what's going on in the world. Now, to be fair, uh, I didn't have to do too, too much digging with this because this all happened on Twitter, right? But nonetheless, anytime you guys show me support, it is deeply, deeply appreciated and it does not go, I do not take it for granted. So let's carry on, right? Because here's the real reason that, uh, I say that New York is done. And shout out to Torian Rain Reloaded in chat. I see you, brother. Shout out to you. I, I, Torian, I, I expect you to do a video on this on your channel, okay? I'm gonna put you on the spot right now. Your tip, you're usually on it, Torian, you know? So I expect you to do a video on this as well, right? But, uh, let, let's carry on, right? Let's carry on. Cause New York City is, is, it's over. It's, it's over for black folks in New York. It's over. And one of the main reasons, oh, reasons it's over is this. First off, what is, what do I have pulled up right here? Okay, this is nothing. One of the main reasons it's over is this. Unfortunately, what we're seeing in New York in a city council is that this is able to happen so blatantly, right? And so openly because in New York City, the black council members are refusing to stand up for black New Yorkers. And they're just bowing and bending the knee as if those particular black New Yorkers who stood up for themselves were doing something wrong. This woman Natasha Williams got called out for not speaking up and saying something, for not shutting those brothers down, for speaking their grievances. And as opposed to standing up for them after the fact and defending them and saying that they weren't doing anything wrong. They were, if anything, they were, uh, expressing their constitutional right of freedom of speech. And it's not like they were saying anything wild like a Kanye West. Like I said, they were just expressing their grievances. But we bend the knee every time. Look at this. I didn't get to read all of this, but I read some of this. And, and let, let's, let's go through what Natasha Williams had to say. After she was scapegoated, they said, "This is your fault. You let this carry on." Natasha goes, "In reference to yesterday's hearing on fair chance for housing, racism and discrimination, hurt us all in different ways and responding to them with similar rhetoric is never the solution. As a black woman, a member of one of the most hated and disrespected demographics on the planet, I know personally how deeply hurtful language can be to our progress as people and one's personal safety. The prejudice against both Asian communities, black communities and justice involved folks, excuse me, and justice involved folks is a product of systemic racism that we must stand against." So she's trying to say face and say, "Oh, well, you know, the issues that Asian communities face, black communities face, this is all systemic racism, right? This is all white supremacy essentially." That's not, y- y- yes and no, but you don't want to call it what it is. Natasha Williams doesn't want to call it what it is. And in some regards, I can understand when people do kind of what they have to do to protect themselves, right? But this woman is in a position of power that dictates laws in New York. You, how can you sit in a seat like that? Watch your people be lied on and you do and say nothing? This is exactly why the New York City Council was able to pass that ridiculous law that would allow non-citizens the right to vote. Meanwhile, at the same time, you had a black city council member saying, "We don't know what this is gonna do for, uh, how this is gonna negatively impact black Americans." Yet they support and get behind this stuff anyways. The black city council members in New York have no backbone. They have no spine. Now, once again, I'm gonna say it again. I understand to a degree when you have to protect yourself, right? I'm not one to go out here and tell everybody to just crash out. But in this particular case right here, this is just flat out wrong. And you're in a position of power and are choosing to do nothing, right? And you're trying to play both sides, but that's not how this plays out. Cause nobody online is looking at it as both sides, right? Everybody online is just saying, "Look at all these black folks, uh, uh, being, uh, anti-Asian. Look at them." So let me continue on. "In May, I held a hearing on hate crimes to highlight the recent increase in anti-Asian hate in our city. I felt it was important to ensure our Asian brothers and sisters had both the support and resources they needed to combat hate. Our liberation is rooted in each other's freedoms. That is why I denounce any hateful or yeah, hateful comments directed towards any community." She's trying to play both sides and you just can't do that. All she did was bend the knee to watching her people get lied on and watching her people, black people, black New Yorkers, continue to be smeared as the face of anti-Asian hate, especially in New York. And once again, this is continuing on. This is also a city council member. This woman right here. Y'all know I'm not good at reading names. I believe this is what? Adrian Adams, I believe the name is, is it spelled out right? It stated Adrian Adams? Right? Speaker of New York City Council, proudly represents the great 28, Southeast Queens, okay? She's part of city council as well. And she tweeted the other city council member Sandra Ong, whose comments I read earlier. I'm not gonna read them again, right? She retweeted her comment saying, "The remarks at today's hearings are inappropriate and unacceptable in council chambers and everywhere. There is never an excuse for such hurtful language. And we must not be divided by believing justice comes from inflicting harm on others. Those people did not inflict any harm on anyone. These brothers and sisters here, the three brothers, one sister, they didn't inflict harm on anyone. They expressed their grievances. They expressed how they're experiencing anti-black racism in New York by Asians in New York. And now they're being labeled as anti-Asian." And one last thing that I want to do before I get out of here, right? Because coming back to Natasha Williams, I want to play something for you guys from a, from a video of mine that I did. I believe it was Monday I uploaded it, right? Okay, so Natasha says, "In May, I held a hearing on hate crimes to highlight the recent increase in anti-Asian hate in our city," right? The increase. Now, this is something that I've discussed before, right? Before the clip that I'm gonna play for you now. But I want to keep nailing this point into the ground. This increase that people are talking about, right, all the time, there's 500% increase here and, you know, for this community and another 300% increase there. This increase that you, they keep talking about with like the AAPI community, right? Or the increases that you see come about that the ADL puts out when they put information out. These are inflated numbers that are being used, right? Val Williams, I appreciate the support. Thank you very much for the Super Chat. It's always appreciated whenever you guys support the channel. Thank you, thank you, thank you for supporting this work that I do over here. Thank you, Val Williams. Where was I at? The numbers are inflated. Like I stated in the video that I uploaded, I believe it was Monday, what you should pay attention to and notice is how when these other groups start referencing how hate crime, hate crimes against them are going through the roof. They're skyrocketing. 50%, 500%, these huge numbers, right? They use these huge numbers, but they never speak according to the actual FBI data. Now, I'm not gonna pull it up right now because I've pulled it up a million times on a bunch of different videos. You all know what it is. We all know that, I believe, is out of around 8,000 hate crimes that happened in 2020. About closer to 3,000 of them. 3,000 were against black Americans out of 8,000. And then there's everybody else, and it wasn't even close. Wasn't even close. And then when you look at who are the perpetrators, right? Who are the ones that are inflicting the hate crimes? Who are the ones responsible for the hate crimes? Over 50% were white Americans, right? But you wouldn't know that according to the data and statistics that everybody else puts forward because they don't use actual official hate crime data that comes from the federal government. They don't do that. They use their own inflated statistics. And that's what I'm gonna show you right now, right? And it's just, so this clip is gonna be about, I don't know, maybe four or five minutes long. We're gonna watch this and then we're gonna get out of here, okay? So let me remove this banner very quickly so that you'll be able to see the video better, okay? And so I'm gonna play this and then after that, we're gonna head on out of here. Now, let's develop a little understanding of how inflating numbers work. First, you have to understand that there is a difference between hate incidents and hate crimes. Notice how the ADL and other organizations such as Stop Asian Hate never cite the official FBI data on hate crimes. The reason they don't do that is because, as we all know, the actual FBI data on hate crimes shows and proves that black Americans are the most hated and targeted race and/or group of people in this country. According to the FBI data, no other race or group of people even comes close to being targeted as much as black Americans. And these organizations know this. And that's why they rely on what's called hate incidents. Hate incidents are incidents that are reported to said organization like the ADL or Stop AAPI Hate versus being reported to the proper authorities. Also, hate incidents do not comprise solely of physical assault, but mainly verbal abuse or physical avoidance. As you can see here in the Stop AAPI Hate's national report, from March 19th, 2020 to December 31st, 2021, a total of 10,905 hate incidents against Asian-American and Pacific Island persons were reported to Stop AAPI Hate. Verbal harassment, 63%, continues to make up the biggest share of total incidents reported. Physical assault, 16%, comprises the second-largest category of total reported incidents, followed by the deliberate avoidance of AAPIs, 16.1%. So in between verbal harassment and deliberate avoidance, that accounts for 79.1% of hate incidents. 79.1% of these incidents consist of, "I don't like how you're talking to me and I don't like that you moved away from me." Now, let's move over to the recent ADL report. In 2021, ADL counted a total of 2,717 antisemitic incidents across the US. This represents a 34% increase from the 2026 incidents recorded in 2020 and is the highest number on record since ADL began tracking antisemitic incidents in 1979. The audit classifies incidents into three categories. Assault, a total of 88 incidents. Harassment, a total of 1,776 incidents were categorized as harassment. Now, this category labeled as harassment is the ADL's version of verbal harassment that we just saw in the Stop AAPI Hate report. Now, you see, verbal harassment can literally mean anything, okay? Verbal harassment can simply break down into, "I don't like how you're talking to me," or "I don't like what you just said," or "I disagree with your perspective or observation." You see, verbal harassment doesn't automatically mean racial slur. Verbal harassment can literally mean anything that you simply just don't like. And then there's the last category, vandalism, with another 853 incidents. Now, if you've been paying attention, do you see how in both reports over half of the hate incidents were verbal harassment? That is precisely how these numbers are inflated. Verbal harassment cannot be verified unless you actually have a witness or there is an audio recording. Outside of that, it's just one person making a claim that another person said something that they didn't like. And that doesn't necessarily mean that what was being said was a racial slur. It could literally be anything. And if you don't like or agree with what was just said, well, that's verbal harassment because I didn't agree with you on that, or because I don't like your observation. But regardless of whatever is being said, almost none of it can be verified. Yet these are the inflated numbers that other groups are using to receive millions of dollars from federal and local governments. These are the inflated numbers that other groups are using to secure hate crime bills that are specifically for them. Yet when... Okay, so that, I'll stop it right there. It's been going on for long enough. But if you want to watch that video for yourself, it's on the channel. You just go to the main page and you'll find that video. But that's what's happening. These inflated numbers that these organizations are using are what everyone's going on. They're never going off of actual FBI data, right? Even a few months back, when I spoke on this, because I've spoken on this, I speak on New York all the time. It is just mind-blowing. The anti-black racism that goes on in New York. Even when you look at the official New York State hate crime data, we're talking about from the official, from New York State, right? That they did, the government of New York. Just about every time, the first page, if I remember correctly, it starts off with a list, right? One to three or one to five, I believe it's like one to three, who are the most targeted people in New York. Just about every year, every year, on the actual data produced by the New York government, it's black New Yorkers that are targeted the most. It's black New Yorkers who experience the most anti-black racism, or just any type of racism, any type of hate crime, I should say, not racism, hate crime, let's be more specific. They're the ones that experience the most hate crimes in New York. All this is proven, easily provable. I can pull up those documentations. I have them all. I'm not going to right now because I've produced them already before, right? I've showed them already before. But they never reference these things. They never reference official data. They go on their own inflated numbers. And everybody runs with these inflated numbers and says, "Look at how horrible this all is." And then the moment black Americans, black New Yorkers have the audacity to open their mouths and speak on their own grievances, speak on the racism that they're experiencing from other groups in New York, they're labeled racist. They're the ones that are labeled anti-everything, right? So your grievances in New York don't count anymore. In New York now, as we speak, stating your grievances and speaking on anti-black racism is now considered hate speech. And with all that being said, that does it for today's live stream. Let me, one more time, let me leave the link to this video in the live comment section for you guys so you can look at it, look at it for yourself. Like I said, given the nature of this video now and just how they've lied on these black folks saying that they're anti-Asian and that they're spewing hate speech, you know, like I said, I just, I gotta look out for myself and the channel. So that's why I'm not playing that video here, even though they said nothing wrong. They did nothing wrong, but there you go, New York City. If you're expressing your grievances, you're talking about anti-Asian, anti-black hate, that's hate speech. So with all that being said, thank you guys for joining me. That does it for today's video. Please make sure you hit the subscribe button as well as the bell notification next to the subscribe button so you'll be notified whenever I release a new video. All social media links will be pinned in the comment section below. Please also make sure you text TDHIPHOP to number 33222. That's TDHIPHOP to number 33222. That way you'll get a direct text notification whenever I release a new video, but it also serves as a protection plan for myself. So in case you, I was gonna say, in case New York ever gives me the ax, in case YouTube ever gives me the ax, I'll be able to send you a direct link to where you can find me next. Also, make sure you join the emailing list. The emailing list is in the description box below. And it's also, I will also have it pinned in the live, pinned in the comment section. And last but not least, if you love the, have a love and appreciation for the work that I put in on this channel, please show your support. Join Patreon for only $3 a month. You can become a channel member for only $3 a month. You can show love via Cash App at Dollar Sign TD Hip Hop. Or you can show love via the Super Chat if you're still in the live stream and if you're watching the replay. If you look beneath your video, you're going to see a heart with a dollar sign. You could also show your financial support to the work that I do there by hitting that heart with a dollar sign in the middle of it. And that's the equivalent of a Super Chat once a video is uploaded, okay? So thank you all for your time, everybody. Please hit the like button on your way out and please share this video as well. And until the next video, peace.